Stand and I'm gonna ask Mr. Jerry Grooms to lead us in the prayer and the pledge.
Father, we come to you now, Lord, we just want to praise you for the day that you blessed us with, but we just ask now that you be with this county commission that they conduct the business that is needed in this county, we just ask that they use the wisdom and the guidance from you that they know and the answers that they need to have. Father, we just ask you, watch over protecting us to go through each thing. Watch over protecting every one of us as well, Lord, as we go through each day. We ask all this in the precious and holy name of Jesus.
Amen.
Amen.
If y'all will remain with the pledge allegiance, my pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. Jerry.
Yes, sir.
All right, guys, we'll call this meeting to order, and if y'all will let the record reflect that we do have a quorum, we are missing Mr. Darrell Bone tonight. Mr. Darrell told me he would be watching and listening on Facebook. Darrell is still trying to recover from COVID and covets your prayers and thoughts. He's still dealing with those issues and said he had a follow-up with his doctor on Friday and just still wasn't feeling real great. So, we miss him and hate that he can't attend, but thankful he's at least able to listen. Have you had an opportunity to review the agenda, and do we have any additions or deletions?
We have an addition of an executive session, and we have three deletions, the boat slips under Parnell, the farm center under Parnell, and the rules for exotic animals under Williams.
Okay. Are there any other additions or deletions that we need to make note of?
Will we approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the claims, and if so, could I get a motion to pay the bills dated May the 11th, 2021?
I make the motion, we pay the bills dated May 11th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I'll be abstaining since I have a family member being paid these claims.
Y'all make note of that in the minutes, please. Any other comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We'll come to the public comment section.
We'll approve the minutes, Mr.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped that out. Thank you, Jim. Should we approve the minutes dated April 27th?
I make the motion, we approve the minutes dated April 27th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Terry Wilson, police.
Right.
How are you tonight?
All right. How are y'all doing?
Good.
Right. Okay. All right, first of all, I'd like to say good afternoon to everybody, and I want, again, appreciate y'all, what y'all did for the shelter and the comfort. We had another storm come through there last Tuesday, Wednesday, one day last week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. And it was crowded.
Good.
That's what we like.
Good to see it being you.
Yes, that's what we like. Appreciate you going out, checking that generator for us.
Yes, sir.
It working. We know it work.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't there, I got hung up at the house from my sister's year old, and by the time I got her traded into my house, it was there.
Right.
So, that's why the generator left going, because I had to cut mine off the next morning. I ain't think about the shelter. But anyway, appreciate you going out and cutting that off for us. First of all, we know we got this big day coming up, the 21st of this month, and we're looking for, all y'all be there, and we'll have a good time. Go eat, you know, we love to eat.
We love to eat, no doubt.
All right. Reading around here tonight about the roads in New Concord, I talked to Mr. Parnell early, and what you said, you know, that's under consideration, you know, you can't do what you can't do.
Right.
But 393, anything, I mean, it just, that patching on pothole, they don't work. It's just like a speed bumps that, I mean, it's rough. It no longer the football field, just get it completely covered with something.
393 or 322?
No, 393. That's the one. Ms. Davis, she's on that road, she been sending the email and picture to the engineer there for years.
Right.
And he'll, they'll send some out and patch them, you know. And that stuff don't last, and they set up, man, just 393.
Okay. I'll get with the engineer, and we'll talk about that and see what it's gonna cost to do that.
It need to start off by the hill, go down the flat, just before you start up the hill, it cuts off. I mean, it's about long football field.
Right.
It's bad.
Okay. You talking about when you turn off on 87, that first left?
The first right. 393.
Okay.
When you come up 87, before you get to my house, you know, 393 winds off.
Right.
That's it.
Okay. All right, gotcha.
And it's bad. People getting over in the ditches, traveling up that road now.
Okay. We'll see what we can do. We're gonna have them out there fixing 322 this summer, and it may be a good time to go ahead and do something there.
Yeah, it's bad. And 322 and 331, you said about the gravel?
Right.
Anyway, anything on the grant thing, the grant by getting some grant money.
Well, we're gonna get to apply for that again this year, but it'll be needs-based in the number of people that live on it, and that's why we qualified for that. We actually are gonna vote tonight on the methodology to pay the bill on it from that grant, but it was because it affected so many people who live there.
Well, I know we're on the need base, and about the people, we're on the need base.
I think that's a fall grant, too, that we, it's in the fall that we get that opportunity to file that grant. Isn't that right, McKisha, somewhere in there? Last two years spending the fall, we have been presented with that. We have a good grant writer keeping up with that, this lady that done it last time, so she'll keep us very informed to try to get some funds, but you know, they, we don't determine what road it is, they determine it. Am I right?
We make an application, and what we did the last two times is we found a road that served a, you had to have so many people that were below a certain income level, and it had to, and they looked at it on a statewide basis and said, we got a pot of money, how can we affect the most people? And we had a road that was just a couple of miles long that was gonna have effect on like 60 people, and that's why we met, we beat other communities out for that grant. So, saying we can get it really is kind of contingent on how well the grant's written and how many people it's gonna affect.
Because it's a statewide grant.
Statewide, okay.
It's a competitive grant, so we've gotta give them reason to want to give it to us.
But we'll try.
Okay. That's all we can do, try. And I appreciate that. That's, oh, your topsoil, gravel.
I'm gonna talk to Tony tomorrow and mention that.
All right.
See what we can come up with. Mr. Terry needs some, where we put the storm shelter in, there's a low spot in the front of it, and water's sitting there, and he asked us if we could get some field dirt or topsoil or something that they could spread and put out there before they
Make the water run to the back.
Before they have their blessing, and get that covered. One, it will cover the red, and two, get the water out from in front of the building. But I told him I'd talk to Tony tomorrow and see what we had available to us and get back to him, but he said he had access to a Bobcat and a credit install.
Okay.
All right.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all for y'all time.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Spruill?
All right.
How are you, sir?
I'm good. How are y'all?
Good, good.
I wanted to come back. I came up and talked to y'all back on March the 9th about the Limited Self-Governing Act, about enacting something to take care of all the junk that is in not only my next door to my property, but throughout Chilton County. And since that time, I've rode up and down several roads, and you know, really and truly, the county should be ashamed that nothing's been addressed. You know, I don't wanna live in a subdivision with covenants either. That's why I bought 42 acres and I built a $500,000 house. But I also don't wanna live next door to the deliverance. And you know, all the county commission's gotta do is pass ordinance for the junk, just like 20 other counties in the state of Alabama has now done. This is becoming a problem. It's devaluing people's property in Blount County, my office is in Jerson County in Trussville, but it just happened in Blount County where there's a lawsuit going on because of property appraisals dropping because of this kind of thing that's been allowed. The majority of the commission can vote this in, and I just wanted to see what your thoughts and your status, or have you talked about it since March 9th, or, because since I've been here, my next-door neighbor has piled up 15 junk cars. If I wouldn't get in trouble, I'd go take care of it myself, but I know I can't do that. But anyway, you know, I take pride in my property to live out on a farm or have property. You know, I should do that and be able to have that and not have, I'm not talking about somebody that's got tractors or something like that. That's totally different. You got peach farmers and strawberry farmers. I'm talking about somebody that just loads junk, piles it in their yard, there's no rhyme or reason for it, there's no use for it. I've got tires, lumber, old batteries, propane tanks, everything under the sun, you know, piled next door, you know, to my house. And you know, personally, I just, I mean, I want something done about it, and I just wanted to see, see what your thoughts are from our March 9th conversation.
We've all had sidebar conversations about this, and I can't speak for these people, but the issue between what's one man's junk and what's another man's treasure is a very thin line, and you know.
I disagree with that.
I understand.
I disagree with that. There's a big difference in somebody junking up their property. You know, when I moved on county road, now listen, I know I chose to live where I live, and when I first turned on County Road 387, the guy that's right there on the corner that's got the junkyard, I knew he was there. But the guy that was next door to me that owns two and a half acres and a house, that, it's an old house, but the old man that lived there kept it up, I helped him keep it up, I cut his grass for him, and it was picture perfect as far as that aspect goes. Now it's turned into a junk thing. And you know, and I understand if y'all don't wanna vote, vote to do something about it, but what I can do, there's upward of 43,000 people that live in the county. There's about 29,000 registered voters, and there's 19,000 and some are active voters. All I have to do is get 10% of those voters to sign a petition, and then we have to have a referendum and have a vote for it. I don't wanna have to do that. You're the elected officials. I've got a business to run. I've got one in Florida and Montgomery and in Trussville. I don't wanna have to do what y'all were elected to do, but I will if I need to.
Right.
And so, if that's the route that we need to go, then we can go that route. But I promise you, I can get 2,000 petitions, because I've already got about 500. So, we'll get the number of petitions to put it out for a vote. And, but you know, I think it's fair to every landowner, not just me, but in Chilton County, from Maplesville to wherever, you know, you ride these county roads, and these people are living like pigs. And you know, if they wanna live like that, that's fine. And I'm not saying that you gotta be the junk police and have somebody that goes around to everybody that's got junk in their yard. That's up to the neighbors around them. But at least the people that do take pride in their property and they care about their property value should be able to have some kind of recourse. If there's a law in effect, I'll get an attorney, and I can get it handled that way. So, you know, I just wanna say, you know, and I know what you just said about another man, you know, that's hard for me to swallow, but you're a businessman, you understand what I'm saying.
I understand both sides of this argument completely.
Well, let me reply to Mr. Spruill. I moved out to city of Clayton to Verbena.
Okay.
Because I don't like rules, restrictions on buying a permit to roof my house, anything along those lines. This subject came up in about 90, and a commissioner came to see me because I, quite honestly, I took him to task about it then. I think I called him the building Gestapo. We have a good neighbor policy. I mean, I can't say your neighbor's a good neighbor or a bad neighbor, but I am for one, am not in favor of any ordinance restricting anybody to what they do on their own property out in the county. And I understand when you bought that property, the man across the road, as you said, was a good neighbor. And I don't know the guy who lives across the road from you now, but if you can't talk to him, then I'm not gonna impose any kind of ordinance on anybody.
Okay, so you don't have a problem, then, if I build a pig pen that goes all the way around his house, and there's pig crap, and he smells it, and he goes to the health department, because I've also had the health department out there because he's got an illegal safety tank system with a mobile home, with it running, with all of his crap running into a self-made little plastic thing that he dug in the ground.
That's a totally different issue.
So, you're okay with that?
Well, it's the same, you know, you get the same argument that this same commissioner gave me about a pig pen against my back property, and I tell him the same thing. I told him the same thing.
And I'm gonna do it, and I'm gonna string them in the tree all the way around his property. Is that okay?
I'll tell you the same thing I told him. That's a good neighbor policy. If he wants to put a pig pen on his property, that's within his right.
Okay.
And if anything he's doing is illegal to the health department, you should take out of it with the health department.
Well, I tried. However, let's see, it's been going on almost two years now, having nobody from the health department showed up. I've called the same man two different times, and if I was in charge, if I ran my business like the health department, I would have fired his ass a long time ago.
Well, maybe y'all could call eight them.
Uh-huh.
Maybe y'all could call eight them.
That's my next step.
That's what I'd do. But as far as us passing ordinance on restrictions.
Well, you're gonna have to when I get the, when I, when I, when I get the, when I get the, the petition.
You get it on the ballot, and it passes the people?
Oh, it's gonna pass. I promise.
Very serious, sir.
I think you'll be surprised
We'll see.
What'll happen, but that's your prerogative.
Who's trying to be liberal? I'm the most conservative person around. There's nobody liberal, and don't call me liberal. You don't know what you're talking about.
Sir, let me talk just a second, please.
Go ahead.
When you put restrictions on people, on what they can do to their property, when only 25% of the registered voters in this county pays property tax, and only about 20%, I mean, 25% owns property, and only about 20% of those own property, pay property tax, then you're saying this is not liberal?
No, it's not liberal. I don't like being called in the liberal. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't look like Joe Biden, do I?
No, sir, you sure don't, not.
Good.
You know, I didn't call you Joe Biden liberal.
Well.
Well, we
Well, I think some of the county commission, if I need to start throwing out some names, just probably don't wanna do it because I know some of their property, and it's got 18 wheelers and broken down equipment all over their property. So, that's probably, it's probably why you don't want, it's probably why you don't wanna vote. Is that right?
I broke down equipment on County Road 24 is what I make a living with, sir.
Okay, okay.
I go down there and get parts off that broken down equipment.
Okay.
And I pay property tax on that property.
I pay property tax on mine, too, quite a bit.
It's your business what you do on your property.
Quite a bit.
It's not your business what somebody else does on theirs, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is if it's junk. And as far as moving out of a neighborhood and having HOA fees, I would think you'd want somebody to come inspect if there's a building in your house. But that's, that's fine with me. You do what you want, but I'm gonna get the petitions. And just remember, there will be another election.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Second.
Mr. Hand?
I'm doing great.
How are y'all doing tonight?
Fairly well.
For Tuesday night?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I hand y'all this?
Yes, sir, welcome.
All righty.
Thank you, sir.
This is a dirt road?
Well, it was a somewhat paved road. We had a few potholes, called about it. Next thing I know it, we got 70 loads of dirt. Road got brought up probably two foot. So, you can see it if you flip all the way.
Yes.
You put this together? It's pretty good. Just gonna comment on the pictures there. Pretty good profile there.
That's why I said picture says the million words.
Yeah. Are you getting flooded, what you're saying, or you, tell me what you're saying?
I had no water problems.
Yes, sir.
I've been living there for seven years.
Yes, sir.
Or actually longer than that, because it's family land.
So, now the water's coming in your yard, is what you're saying?
Way open the floodgate.
Okay.
Because it goes across from my neighbors, if you can look at one of the pictures. They raised it up a foot and a half to two foot. In one of those pictures, they absolutely covered up my drain ditch, just buried it, no drain ditch, toward the very back, like completely covered it up.
So, what's gonna happen? They filled it up?
Oh, no, describe filled. Describe filled. Like, what, four inches?
Two foot or
Yeah, two foot.
They filled it up, and they didn't put a drain?
No, no, drain was there. They covered the drain up.
So, if the drain was open, the water was
That's, well, they came back, had to redo it. Pipe's only been there seven years, man filled it up, but still, I'm leveled across, coming across from somebody else's driveway, coming down. So, I'm living down at an angle. So, all that water coming off that road is coming down my driveway. If you look at, you can see the little creek that went all the way around my house.
Are these pallets in your yard, sir?
Uh, I don't live beside the liver, but, uh.
I know. I just flipped past it three times. I couldn't, I was like.
I know. Send the mass police out there.
Hey, just, let me, can I?
Yes, please.
We will get somebody to look at this. Matt, can you take care of this and look at it for us? Thank you. It'll be taken care of. See what we can do to help you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
All right, we'll move on to the department reports. Sheriff John Sharon, please, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen.
How are you tonight, Sheriff?
Doing lovely, doing lovely. I'd like to ask for a resolution to reclassify Justin Smithman from part-time deputy back to a full-time deputy.
I'll make a resolution to reclassify Justin Smithman to a full-time deputy effective May the 15th, 2021.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and the next, I'd like to just request for a resolution to accept resignation from Lieutenant Lee Faulkner.
I request a resolution regretfully to accept Lee Faulkner's resignation.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or comments?
Just to let you know that Mr. Lee Faulkner took a job that I wouldn't have turned down myself, so.
Well, you can't blame him for bettering himself, even though we all hate to lose him.
Didn't even try to talk, talk him out of it. It's gonna be better for his family.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
But he will definitely be missed.
He will.
He's a good
Yep. Thank you for all you do, Sheriff.
Sir, thank y'all.
We'll move down to the staff reports, and we'll start with the commission office. Ms. McKisha, would you lead us through that, please?
Yes, sir. The state of Alabama Department of Revenue has sent a request to know whether we're participating or not participating in the 2021 back-to-school sales tax holiday on July 16th through the 18th.
I'll make a motion we participate.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I'll just say that either for or against that if we do this, it'll be an abatement of half of this county sales tax, because we can't abate for any day or any period of time the part that is, that goes to the hospital tax or the Board of Education, and it will make it extremely difficult on business owners in the county to get their sales tax correct on that one given day. So, we'll move to vote if unless there are any other comments. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, aye.
Aye.
Let the record
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I seconded that before I found out the information.
Okay, that's fine.
I didn't know either. I thought we'd, something we'd done every year.
No, we've never done this before because we've never had a sales tax before last year that we could abate, but because we have two of our three or four cents, depending on where you are, committed, we can't abate those. All right, thank y'all. We'll move forward.
Mr. Williams wanted to say something right quick.
I just wanted everybody to know that Sheriff got bragged on big time. I meant to do this while he was up here a while ago, Sheriff. The night of the storm over on the west side of the county, the only thing that they said bad about him was his arms was too short. And I'll let him explain that to y'all, what he meant. But he did, he spent most of the night over there clearing roads.
Yep.
And I thought he should be commended by this commission for going way above and beyond. And everybody in that end of the county that I've talked to appreciate it. He's out every storm.
Y'all are special. I mean that sincerely. Y'all really are. Y'all are a gift to this county. All right, we'll move forward. Ms. McKisha?
I'd like to request a resolution to approve the CDBG invoice for Grant Management LLC in the amount of $9,600. We will pre-approve this invoice until we receive the proceeds from the grant, and then we'll issue payment.
I'll make that resolution as read.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to open a CDBG grant management account with the signatories.
I'll make that motion as read.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to pay the excess bid funds to Wesley Hicks for the PPIN number 20483 in the amount of $1,345,004. It's the one that's greater than three but less than 10 years.
I'll make that resolution as stated.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
That's all I have.
All right. On behalf of the county engineers department, Mr. Matt Epperson.
I'd like to request and accept the resignation of Jordan Jones effective 5/21/21.
I'll make a resolution to accept the resignation of Jordan Jones effective 5/21/21.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I request the resolution to advertise and hire to fill this position.
I'd like to make a resolution, we advertise and hire or bank this guy, pay will be based on experience.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I request a resolution to accept the resignation of Bobby Christopher Ray effective immediately.
We accept the resignation of Bobby Christopher Ray effective immediately. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'd like to request a resolution to advertise and hire to fill this position.
I'll make a resolution to advertise and hire for a truck driver. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Matt, for what you do.
Thanks, man.
Matt, I don't think, was you wanting a resolution to hire another person for the Jones guy, too?
That is a maintenance guy.
That is, that's it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the young one, the last one we hired, Joe.
Is that it?
That's it, that's it.
You got anything else before I can go on?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I updated earlier, and I probably should have taken this off the agenda, but because I didn't, I'll go ahead and update everyone again. Under my agenda item, I have finances, and I just wanted to let y'all know that several months ago, we solicited a group of banks to procure funding to help us with retail development associated with the farm center, and we have had a local bank come back with an offer for us, and they have, they have approved our loan if we choose to go forward. And we had another larger regional bank that reached out to Roger and I today, and they wanna have some further discussions about the potential of doing a loan with us. Roger and I, just to notify you guys, we will continue to have that conversation, but before any But before any kind of commitments are made at all, we'll come back to you guys, uh, both with our offers and for authorization of y'all to move forward if we need it. But just wanted to let y'all know that we have been approved, uh, for the loan as of today if we decided to move forward. Okay? We'll move down, Commissioner Hardy?
Uh, I'm gonna begin asking for a resolution to hire a full-time employee to be a employee of Higgins Prairie Park under supervision of Donald Giles. Uh, the pay will be based on experience.
So we're gonna advertise for that?
Advertise it.
And you're gonna work with Donald and Terry to write a job description?
Job description and interview process.
Okay. All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hardy, would it cause any problems if you get with Mr. Giles and maybe some more and get a defined description of this resolution, what we are going to do and so forth, and let's vote on this next meeting?
Well, that's why it's talking about doing the job description, that's what it's talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can move forward with it now?
Okay.
So that we can, uh, pin in the job description?
Okay.
If that's okay?
Yes, sir.
And I'll get with him immediately.
But if we go ahead and put that description together and begin advertising, we'll...
Yeah.
We'll be eating into our thirty days, and by the next meeting, we'll be in a position where... We could accept that job description and maybe even put some financial criteria around it.
That's right.
Okay? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That's it, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Headley, you have anything we need to address tonight?
No, sir.
Uh, Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, sir, I just got a little thing here I want to read. This is to the commission of our county. To my fellow commissioners and the people of Chilton County, this is not a debate, it's not a discussion, it's not a question and answer, it's just strictly a statement of concern. We're a group of men that was elected by the people of this county, and they put their trust in us to lead them in this county with the best of our ability. I myself counted a great honor to be sitting here in this position, uh, tonight and for the next few years. But will our decisions always be right? Maybe, maybe not. But at times that we make these decisions, we have to believe that it is right for the good of this county, not only for the present, but for the future. Our duty also as commissions of this county to lead this county is to do the best we can to work in unity with each other. Does this mean that we will never disagree? Certainly not. And I have no problem with disagreeing. When I disagree with the majority, the way I see things, I'm to fall in and work with you and continue to work together for the good of this county. If I don't, and then I'm causing division among us and the county, and if I make statements that causes people to call my fellow commissioners names, accuse them of things that are not right, that they're doing things dirty, they're doing things illegal, they're putting money in their pockets, then I am the one responsible. And I should go to that person and make those things right. If I ever cause any negative about my fellow commissioners or this county, I totally accept my, expect my commissioners to draw my attention to the matter. My goal as county commissioner is to do the best that I can for the advancement of this county in every aspect. When I leave this position as county commissioner, I would like to hear around this county that this is one of the best commissions that we've ever had. And as a commissioner, or as a commission, we can share our views, uh, whether they be the same or different, without downing each other. So I'm asking my fellow commissioners to let each one of us respect each other to the highest level. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kelly. Commissioner Manns?
Yes, sir, uh, I would like, uh, for the IDA, uh, earlier, uh, today, I sent out an email, which we received this a week or, I guess it's been about two weeks ago. Uh, we received from the city of Clayton their terming, termination resignation letter from the Industrial Development Authority. And in doing that, to honor their wishes, we would like to, uh, update the articles of incorporation. I, I have passed out to all of you a copy of the resolutions, uh, and they've been signed, I think, all completely, to, uh, update our resolution or update the articles of the IDA to reflect the wishes of the city of Clayton. I would like to ask for that resolution, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
What's the discussion on that? I mean, is it, I guess that's their desire?
Yeah, now, we're...
Yeah, that's why I sent everybody a, a copy of it, so, I mean, their desire was to withdraw from the IDA. So we're just literally changing our articles of the IDA to honor their wishes.
Okay.
And all this has been, uh, this was all written, or I guess approved, the changes, uh, by our attorney, so.
And y'all met this morning and voted to move forward with it?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, I've got, I've got one more thing. I would like to, uh, introduce, uh, former Commissioner Alan Caton, uh, to read a letter. Uh, at our last meeting, um, you come on up, at our last meeting, uh, Commissioner Williams, uh, said something that, uh, I, I think some of the, um, mayors in the, the county, uh, found offensive, and, uh, I think he would like to give an update on that.
Well, before I do that, I want to give some gifts.
Okay, even better.
Oh, I've been wanting to know one of those.
About time.
Can we accept it? You'll see that?
It's less than twenty-five dollars.
You see that, Alan?
I looked at his today and said, why the world...
Do I get a nose?
You can get a nose.
I got mine right now, so. Thank you.
Gotta be careful what you give.
Yeah, exactly right.
Thank you.
How much was this?
I mean, for anything free.
Made in China. Made in China.
I want to leave this for home, y'all give that to them. And, uh, Alan, I want to give you one of these. It says Chilton County Commissioner.
Well, thank you. Think I got one.
Thank you, Alan.
Yeah, I was, I was listening, and, and Alan, I think what Alan said was that he heard...
Yeah.
Somebody told him that, and it kinda, it upset the other mayors because they, they, they have no intention of pulling out. So they jointly put together a statement, and they asked us, asked the IDA to read that tonight, and that's what I'm doing. It says, uh, Mayor Eddie Reed, Mayor W.C. Hayes of Mapleville, Mayor Robert Height of Thorbsview, will remain as members of the Industrial Development Authority, known as the IDA, of Chilton County, and offers the following joint statement. We affirm the mission of the IDA of Chilton County and look forward to the continued active service as voting members of the Board of Directors. The IDA of Chilton County is instrumental in economic development efforts, community planning efforts, including infrastructure like broadband and other community developments. Efforts and, offers in each of our communities, as well as the unincorporated of Chilton County. But they basically, you know, they, they just want to make sure that there is no misunderstanding. Our other cities have no intentions, they are regular members, they come to all of our meetings. Shannon is the representative to Jimson, he comes to all of our meetings, if he's not there, he's on Zoom. So our, our other cities are very active in our IDA.
Good deal, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you, Alan.
You have anything else, Commissioner Manns?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move down to Commissioner.
I would like, also, I'd like to give this to the commission office as part of the minutes.
Thank you, Alan.
That'd be great.
All right, Commissioner Williams?
Uh, this I'll ask Commissioner Headley. Uh, did you find anything about speed bumps in Isabelle? I'm still getting questions about those.
Yeah, well, you know, the last time it come up, we said that we would remove the speed bumps and put rumble strips there when they redone, resurfaced the road.
So that's gonna be the stance on it now?
Well, I thought, yeah, yeah, that's... And they resurfaced the road, we're gonna take them out and put them little rumble strips, and I think I gonna put them on all four.
Interests.
Yeah, all four roads with the stops on them.
Okay. And that's not far away, is it?
No.
Matt's gone, but we're...
Yeah, it's not, that's not too far away.
Is that the, what, gonna be the third road on the paving schedule after, uh, fifty-five and...
Alan, I can't answer that, I haven't seen the priority on them.
But it'll definitely say double words, you know?
We've got a, we've got a list of them, we've got a list of those that's handed out real early, after, right after our election.
We just don't know what's...
Yeah, I thought that was the order.
There was just a list of roads, though, I don't think there's a priority.
Okay.
I think they got eighty-one done, and they got thirty-eight done, and they working their way down this way.
They kind of fit them in as to how much time they have in their schedule and how long it's gonna take, but it's kind of their discretion to order. I certainly hope they wake the schools out before they do that Isabelle Road. Okay? You have anything else, Alan?
Yeah, I had, uh, I had gone by the commission office last week. I'd, I've looked at bills and everything, and I never looked at a bill from our attorney's office. And I was looking through there, and I noticed some things on back, and, uh, one of them was, uh, ag clean, agri-clean, uh, contract amended on twelve thirty-one. Was that something that we approved? I don't remember, we approved the amended contract?
Yeah, COVID cleaning.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had listed it when we came to, when we did the resolution, and they got here in something about the way the ventilation system worked. Some of the, uh, scr, what do they call those things, uh?
Caspers, duh.
The Casper system wouldn't work with the counter ventilation system we had.
He had to change the...
So he had to go back and actually amend the contract to put the, the right equipment on it that would fit with our stuff, and then we went back and voted on it again.
Instead of putting the...
We voted on it after, after the fact, okay, I didn't remember voting on it yet.
Instead of putting the, on the actual air conditioning, instead we, we put boxes in.
Standalone units.
That's right.
Mostly in the judge's office, because he had such poor ventilation. They had to do the standalone units in there because the air didn't circulate enough to, for the air purifier to work.
Uh, another thing, did, did we vote to, uh, establish a Chilton County Cooperative District?
We have not.
Well, I noticed a bill from, uh, January the twentieth, where documents have been prepared for Chilton County Cooperative District.
They are prepared, we have not voted on it yet because we ain't gotten to that stage yet.
Why and how would we do that without this commission voting to do so?
That we haven't, that's why it hadn't been enacted.
Well, I mean, why would our attorney, who would have instructed him to...
That would have most likely been me, Alan. Because we were headed in that direction.
Yeah, but he... Isn't it proper for this commission to vote on something like that before any legal work is actually done?
No.
No?
Not proper or improper, that's why I have to have things prepared to bring to y'all. Because if we voted on everything, waited two weeks for them to work on it, then voted again, nothing would ever happen.
Oh, something...
So I take some leeway on some things to have things prepared to present to y'all to vote on.
Well, that looks like pretty big leeway. To take, to have our attorney spend time and taxpayers' money creating a document, or creating documents that we haven't authorized to enter into yet, or to even look into establishing a cooperative district.
We've, we've been looking into it for two years.
So there's a resolution, there's a resolution to look into doing, uh, creating cooperative districts?
We discussed it in our, in our prior commission, uh, and I'm trying to remember here, but, well, we discussed it creating cooperative district way back a couple of years ago.
So, well, at this time, the city had a cooperative district.
No, at this time, when this happened, is when the city had made their statement that they were not gonna fund a cooperative district, and they were not gonna move forward with it. And so we began looking into forming our own cooperative district.
Well, it just looks odd to me that we have documents prepared...
They're still prepared.
For, well, I understand that, but we haven't voted for him to prepare those documents, that's, that's my point. It was just odd going through here how far back that some of these discussions had taken place on stuff that, uh, I knew nothing about.
I, I, I ain't trying to butt in, but I, I really feel like that, uh, that's why we, when we elect a chairman, he's got a few duties that's, uh, that he takes care of that we don't do, and then he brings them to us, and, uh, we elect that chairman that, that we think he's got the ability to do that and, and lead us on forward, uh, and, and work with that attorney without our vote and, and trust him to do it. I, I, I don't know exactly all the chairman's duties, but that's sort of the way it was when I was chairman at one time. They said, hey, look, you know, we're giving you this duty, don't do anything crazy, and, you know, it's just, it's sort of just like...
Well, is that legal according to Alabama state law? It is legal for the chairman to take that liberty to do that?
He's got a few more authorities than we got, that's reasoning.
I knew you had some leeway. Oh, yeah. Oh, I understand. You did that for me the very first week about something. Now, this is preparing documents.
It's research for the cooperative district.
We, we will use those documents, though.
Most likely, we will use those. That circumstance has not changed.
Okay, well, I see it...
You gotta have documents to back it up, don't you? I'm just asking.
Well, usually you decide you're gonna do something before you go to doing it, and this body hasn't decided we're gonna form a cooperative district. And we haven't. That's my point. We haven't decided we need a cooperative district.
Before we can report, Mr. Williams.
Well, that's just, that's, that's my point, my opinion, that it should have been done through this body, decided we're gonna form a cooperative district, and it hadn't been done. Uh... That's the only way I have.
Talked about it a lot in the, in industrial, in some of the industrial meetings, Nick May, it was probably before you got here, I think we've talked a lot about forming those districts.
It was gonna have to.
A while back, so it's...
Well, there's one other thing, uh, this happened back in October. Eminent domain for IDA grant. Can you explain that to me?
I, I can, I, I can, if, I, I remember that. Um, we applied for a grant, and we had to sign a document that said that we would not invoke eminent domain.
Okay, that's what...
And Roger had to prepare that document for us to sign. So rumors, hey, we'll dispel those right now because there've been some rumors out there. Chilton County, as far as I know, never intends to invoke eminent domain to take anyone...
I thought I saw that, that's what I thought.
What we did was have a letter prepared saying that we were not going to, because it had to be in the file for the grant application.
I move we adjourn.
Well, we can't adjourn just yet.
We got, we got an executive session on the slate now. So what we'll do is, Roger, you wanna, you wanna lead us into the, what to do?
Make a motion that we go into executive session per our attorney.
Will not be actionable, and we will not reconvene.
You gotta give a reason. We gotta give a reason.
We have a motion and a second.
You have to have some kind of a reason.
We won't vote, we have a motion and a second, we're gonna vote, or you wanna give a reason for...
You gotta tell us when you're gonna vote.
So, it is my understanding that there is a report to come to you involving economic development that is in a competitive environment, um, and that it also contains, uh, information concerning possible real estate acquisition. And there are those reasons under the Alabama code. I have prepared a declaration that'll be entered into the minutes, uh, certifying to my opinion that these matters would be for that purpose. You cannot take action. As I told you the last time we had an executive session, the discussions are absolutely, totally confidential, should not be discussed outside this chamber. The only people allowed in this room at this point will be the IDA representatives as our agent for our economic development purposes. So we'll need everyone else to leave the room, uh, assuming you vote to go into executive session. Okay. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by a show of hands?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that Mr. Williams opposes the executive session.